Gentlemen, we're going to call to order the City of Andover meeting of Tuesday, November 13, 2018. We'll start with a roll call to my far left.
Brian Schwann, Councilmember.
Caroline Hale, Councilmember.
Troy Taber, Councilmember.
Clark C.R. Nelson, Councilmember.
Greg Schneider, Councilmember.
Mike Warrington, Councilmember.
Mike Keller, Police Chief.
Donna Davis, Chief Financial Officer.
Chad Russell, Fire Chief.
Jennifer McCosland, Assistant City Administrator.
J.T. Klaus, City Attorney.
Les Mangus, Director of Public Works.
Susan Renner, City Clerk.
And the best, save the best for last?
Mark Dedder, City Administrator.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mark Dedder is here this evening. We thank you. I want to acknowledge that our mayor is out of town, not here, and he has a fool standing in for him. So cut me a lot of slack this evening, well, except for the police chief. Our next item is the invocation, is Norm Nevens around? Why don't you come on up as the pastor at Christ Church, and we're really glad to have you here this evening.
Thank you very much for inviting me and having me here this evening. Would you pray with me? Father God, we are so thankful for this day you've given us. And, Lord, as a city, as a community, we are just so thankful for the many blessings you've poured out upon this community, for the way you sustain us and watch over us. And, Lord, we are so thankful for this caring and serving body of administrators, servants, and first responders that we have been blessed with. We've been blessed beyond the measure of a city that our size could ever ask for, and we are just so thankful to you for the way you've provided. And, Father, as we head into this season where the nights are growing longer, sometimes the darkness inside of us starts growing with depression and anxiety. And I just pray your blessing upon every member of this community. I pray a renewed spirit of your joy to be poured out upon each and every member, that we would remember your blessings, that we would hold them to be true, and this would be a season of joy and celebration and peace for this entire city. We are so thankful for this gathering, and we just lift it up to you. We pray that your wisdom and your guidance would be with us as we go through this evening. And we ask all this in your holy name, amen.
Thank you. Would you all like to stand now and cite our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, the first four items have gone very well this evening. Item number five is a public forum. This is to allow any citizen who wishes to address the council, and now's the time to do so. Seeing none, we will move forward. The next item is the acceptance of the agenda. Is there anything new or different on the agenda that you know of?
I think the police chief will have something at the end of the evening.
Did you pass that out?
He passed it.
Okay, so, but...
Do you have this memorized? Oh, boy.
We'll take it up when we get to member items, though.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move to accept the agenda as presented, to include a memo from the Chief of Police.
All right, we got a motion to accept the agenda. And seconded by Troy, to accept the agenda as modified. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. The next item is a presentation by the REAP Guiding Principal Resolution. John Waltner, I assume you're present here this evening? If you'd like to take the podium, we'll be more than happy to see what's going on.
Mr. President, Mr. Waltner is a consultant with REAP. He is the former mayor of Heston, Kansas, and the former Harvey County Administrator, so he's probably got more knowledge, and a history teacher on top of that. So he's probably got a lot that he could bore you with tonight. But I think he's just going to try to talk about REAP and Andover's involvement, and we might get a little bit into this economic development policy that's been put in front of you.
Do you happen to have any goods on our city administrator?
See me afterwards.
You go right ahead, the floor is yours.
I just want you, not just your city administrator, I came to know your city attorney as well. When I was mayor of the City of Heston. So, yeah, we crossed paths a couple of times. He did some, worked on some bond issues with us, and now is doing a lot of work with the City of Heston. So, with that, let me, first of all, thank you very much for letting me come and spend just a few minutes with you. As Mr. Dedder already told you, I was the mayor of the City of Heston. I was mayor for 25 years there, from 1985 to 2010. And then also during that period of time, I worked for 17 years with Harvey County as County Special Projects Director, and then eventually as the County Administrator. So I've been to a lot of local government meetings. I truly have. That's a lot if you start adding them all up. And I do know the value of brevity when people like myself come and meet with the council, so I promise to take very, just a very little bit of your time, but I do appreciate it. I began working with REAP in the early 2000s, when I was working with Harvey County. And during that time, I really became a very strong proponent of the organization because what attracted me to it, and I think it attracts a lot of people to the organization, it is, first of all, a coalition of the willing. I mean, there is nothing compulsory about it. It's a coalition of the willing. It's designed to look at, to address those issues of commonality that all of us in our communities, even though we have very specific kinds of things that affect us, there are those issues that we all have in common that really don't pay much attention to our local boundaries. And they do it in a way, the organization works with those issues in a way of increasing, developing, and increasing the level of trust among elected officials in the region. And I can tell you that in the last 20-some years that REAP has been in existence, the level of trust, and those of you that are sitting up there who have participated in the REAP organization meetings and have come to know other elected officials from around the region, you know that the level of trust is certainly at a higher level than it has been in the past. And that, I think, is a really very, it's a very important thing. I have two things I want to share with you this evening. First of all, the main reason I'm here is to say thank you. I work a little bit with REAP now since I retired from Harvey County in the area of member relations. And I just want you to know that we don't get out very often and say thank you to our members. There are 26 members of the REAP organization now. And one of the things I told them I wanted to do is just simply come to every single one of those members and thank them. Thank them for participating in the organization, for supporting it. Because it's only when organizations such as yourselves support REAP that REAP can continue. The other thing I just, that I want to do is just simply share a little bit with you about some of the things that are occurring in the organization. I left at each of your places this evening, this little brochure right here, this flyer. It's the 2017 Annual Report of the REAP Organization. It's not a ponderous, fact-filled document. First of all, you'll see listed the, all of the members, the 26 members of the organization, and their representatives. Your mayor is listed on here as representative. He's no longer, he's not here this evening. Some of those names have changed because, since this came out in 2017. But that gives you an idea of who participates in this organization. If you open it up and take a look at it, you'll see some of the things that the organization addresses. We just really work at developing partnerships with all sorts of organizations, with the BREG organization, with WAMPO, other regional entities. We also do things like promote region-wide economic development, the importance of commercial air service, and so on, out at Eisenhower Airport. It's a pretty wide-ranging list of things that the organization works with. I do want you to know, and we won't go through this in any detail. You can browse through that at your leisure. But there is just a little bit of information in there about who people are in the organization and what we've done. I do want you to know that a week ago, the organization held an Economic Development Summit at Wichita State University, at the Hughes Metroplex, at 29th and Oliver. And I don't know if any of you had a chance to attend that. We had a number of people there, there were about 100 people at that. I don't know if any of you had a chance to attend. It was really a very informative session. A fellow by the name of Tim Cowden from Kansas City, he's the CEO of Kansas City Development, the Area Economic Development Group, came down and addressed the group, first of all, about the importance of doing things regionally, of learning how to think regionally and act regionally. And it was interesting. He talked about the difficulties, and we've experienced some of those, and also some of the really positive things. I find it interesting, and it's relatively timely today. One of the things that he talked about was, for them, the importance of preparing a proposal, of responding to a request for proposals to Amazon. And today in the news, you've heard a little bit about Amazon HQ2. They made their announcement that they are going to put their next major offices in New York City and Washington, D.C. Well, Kansas City responded to that request, and they didn't make the top 20, but they responded to that request. And he's talked about that, not in any kind of a negative way, but he talked about the importance of developing that proposal because they brought together a huge number of people from the region in all sorts of capacities, in the public, from the public sector and the private sector, to develop this. And even though they weren't in, they didn't make it to the top 20 and yet to go to the next step, what they found was that it was a very, very significant experience for them to be able to work together on something like that with their peers from around the region. Very significant thing for them. And he expressed how positive that was. And coincidentally, as I was driving down here this evening from Heston, where I live, I heard on the radio, an official from Pittsburgh, not Kansas, but Pennsylvania, and he talked about exactly that same thing. They didn't make the top 20, but he talked about how important it was for them to work together as a region to develop their proposal. And it has led, even though they don't get Amazon HQ2 located in their region, they have received all sorts of other interests. And what they developed has helped them in all kinds of economic development exercises since then. So just want you to know, that was a really very interesting, I felt, part of that afternoon. One other thing came out of that, and that was the discussion, first of all, presentation of all the people there, and then a discussion of the resolution that I think you have in your packet. It's a resolution that the REAP organization put together to distribute to its members in an effort to have our members look at that and hopefully sign it, officially sign it. What it really does is state how important it is for us to work together, for us to do economic development professionally, and not poach one another's entities and prospects. And it's an important step. It really is an important step for us. And so that is the reason it's being sent to all of our member entities, and I think you folks have it in your packet. I don't know when on the agenda, Mark, you have that set for action, or if there is action tonight. I just simply want you to know that I'd strongly encourage you to look at that positively and consider passing that because it's an important statement to make for our region, for us to be able to think and act as...
John, I just put it on as a discussion item, and, you know, I know you've had it in your packet. I'd like to give the chance for the mayor to be here to weigh in it as well. We have so much stuff on our workshops lately that I just thought I would put this on. I'm just going to summarize it like this, is you all, most of you were here when we went through the recruitment of a pretty big business a couple of years ago. And we were involved in trying to work with the City of Wichita, who had the existing business in their town, on how they would deal with their IRB. We were dealing with the state, trying to get incentives. And, you know, there was another community in our area who was also fine, and they were recruiting the business. I just think it would have been helpful at the time to have some guidelines amongst the fellow communities in the area to everybody communicate with what was going on. I didn't feel free to start calling around everybody and say, are you talking to these guys? Were we talking to them? But after that whole process was over, I didn't feel like it was fair to the City of Wichita. I didn't feel like it was fair to KDOT. I didn't feel like it was fair to the Department of Commerce. All the people, the Kansas Gas Company, all the people we were involved with, to not let them know that, you know, this wasn't as sure of a thing as I really thought it was at the time. And, you know, I'm not trying to, you know, point the fingers and say that anything underhand it was going on. I just didn't feel comfortable at the time calling anybody. I knew there were a few people who were possibly talking to them, but I didn't feel like I could just pick up the phone and say, hey, what are you doing here? If everybody were to agree to this, while you can't guarantee anything, I would feel a lot more comfortable having an open conversation on those things and telling the fellow cities what we have going on, and I would expect them to reciprocate and share their information about what they have going on. I think that's fair. Because we certainly were that way with the City of Wichita while we were recruiting this business. We waited on their council to take action for months, and we didn't do anything until they had taken action. And I just think everybody should be playing by the same rules as much as possible.
Well taken.
I appreciate that, Mark. And, Council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Thank you again. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. I certainly remember, Mark, that potential business and all of the communications and how difficult that they were. And if we had something like this gentleman was talking about, it might ease our way in the long run to have everybody win.
It seems like I was in a meeting with several city managers, we've talked about this a couple of times. Seems like everybody's comfortable with doing that at this point. And I just, again, I was like, hey, we're going to be great with it if everybody hears to it because, you know, we're willing to compete out in the open on anything. It's just, I think we've got to, you know, get that back to...
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Items, items 8.1 through 8.7. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve the Consent Agenda, items 8.1 through 8.7 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to approve the Consent Agenda as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We now are on item nine, which is the Temporary Use Case 18-07. Temporary use application for Christmas tree lot and general merchandise sales at 1600 West Highway 54. Is this something that you're into, Lester?
Yes, sir. As I explained to you in the memo, the applicant has an existing temporary use permit that is administratively approved for a Christmas tree lot. It's specifically called out as a permitted temporary use in the zoning regulations. What he's asking tonight is for authorization to extend that temporary use to include the sales of general merchandise. And Mr. Marriott is here tonight, he can explain to you just what that means.
Jacob, I guess we're going to have to hear from you this evening.
Seems like I'm always here, isn't it? Thank you, guys, for having me here. Basically, yeah, Les had approved us earlier on it. The two things we're asking for is, one, our trees are coming in a week earlier. So we, you know, if we're going to have the trees on the lot, we'd like to be open. And after all of our discussions, the last time we went out and we've bought the general merchandise stuff, we bought stocking stuffers. We think it's a good add-on to Christmas trees and stuff like that. So that was kind of a gray area with, does that fall under a Christmas tree lot or not? So to make it, you know, make sure everything was correct, we wanted to add that to our special use permit. So we're going to have, oh, a hodgepodge of items, I guess would be the correct term, from stockings to teddy bears that sing and dance, to remote-controlled cars, to all sorts of fun, exciting stuff over at the farm.
Okay. Anybody have any questions, comments?
I guess I have a question. To get a temporary use permit to sell general merchandise, is that okay? Or is there some specific additional, I don't know, authorization we'd need to give to sell general merchandise, as if you're a, you know, a business that's in business to do that kind of thing?
The zoning regulations allow the City Council to approve seasonal-type events. And I think, you know, in my opinion, this is a seasonal-type event. He's wanting to sell some Christmas holiday stocking stuffers.
So you're saying that this is a proper avenue with which to pursue? I'd like to make a couple of comments. Number one, regardless of how we come out on this one, I again want to thank you for the fireworks event that you had here this summer. It was second to none, and we're very proud to be a part of that. And secondly, we have talked about this particular area of Andover being critical in the overall development of our fine city. And I realize this is a temporary item, but I don't want anybody to lose sight that our overall plans are to make something worthwhile, hopefully income-productive, and something that we're all proud of in the long run. Let us get to the temporary use application. Are there any other comments of anyone? If not, anyone propose a motion of some type?
Mr. President, I make the motion that's provided, that's recommended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Troy and a second by Brian to approve the temporary use application for Christmas tree lot and general merchandise sales from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. from November 20, 2018, through December 25, 2018. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Can you believe that?
Thank you, guys. I want to say about the fireworks once again, you know, we really appreciate all the work from the city, and there's been a lot of talk on that from the backside. And we're going to Branson next year, and there's actually been groans about it. Everyone enjoyed it so much. So it's been kind of a nice feather in my hat that everyone really enjoyed Andover so much that they're complaining about going to Branson, which before Andover was the favorite spot for the fireworks show. It was highly sought after. So we really did nail it, and I like hearing people groan that they're not going to be here. So thank you, guys, again, for all that.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is item number 10, a special use case SU 2018-02, Ordinance 1685. You will recall that this is an item that the City Council passed a motion, and later it was vetoed by the mayor. This matter comes up again to see what, if anything, we will do with respect to that veto. I don't know if we need any additional comments by Mark or anyone with regard to this?
I'm just going to say, and the city attorney can clarify some of the legalities of this if you begin to have questions about that. But we did receive notice that the college, after the veto, was talking about, you know, something in the effect of withdrawing the application. I think we've gone to a point where this is a legislative action that we've approved, and it's the council's prerogative to decide if they want to confirm with an override their intent to grant this special use under the conditions that were attached. What the letter kind of went over was the fact that because this process has taken a few months, that in fact, the college was going to have to exercise the full term of their lease at the high school, and, you know, the school district would be cost money. I see no reason that has to happen. This is a perfectly good project with this special use permit, and we are in the next, we'll be in the next stage. In fact, we've already talked about what improvements are needed in the area. So if we just get to work and get these things approved now, we can have people who are sophomores at Andover High graduate from that new high school in 2021. There's no reason that this building and this infrastructure can't be built in the 18-month time period that's going to allow them to transition into school. And there's no reason anybody needs to be talking about the school paying $30,000 a month, or whatever the fines are, that if they get delayed on the project at all. We have something right in front of us that we can go forth with. We've had a lot of discussion with the college. If they choose not to take advantage of the special use permit that we could, we should, I believe we should consider overriding the mayor's veto on and reaffirming our commitment to that. That's their choice. But the City of Andover cannot be blamed for delaying the school's project any. When we're perfectly open, the majority of this council has shown twice already that they're perfectly open to this project going on. And I think our attorney has told us we can go forth. There's no harm to the college if we do override and approve it. If they don't want to utilize that special use permit and go this route, that's their choice. We'll work with them again on another solution. But I want to make it clear, staff's not going to change their opinion that improvements are needed in this area. And how those are paid for and what we're doing, we can continue to have discussions. But we're close here, folks. It's not a matter of this two, three-month process has stopped them from able to make that goal. We can get this done if we all work together and work towards this. And again, if you have any legal questions, I'm sure the city attorney would be glad to answer it. But I think we have something we can go forth with tonight.
So I just wanted to make sure that even though we have correspondents from the college, that they're not desiring to go forward. This is on our agenda this evening, and there is no harm, from your perspective, that we can proceed with this line item.
I really don't know how there could be any harm to anybody if you were to take up the action on whether to override the mayor's veto or not.
All right. With that understanding, maybe we could open up to the bench here to see if anybody's interested in submitting a motion to override the mayor's veto of Ordinance 1685.
I'd make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Troy and a second by Mike to override the mayor's veto of Ordinance 1685 relative to the special use case as presented. I've got a few comments here. I have, in some detail myself, reviewed Veto 1 and Veto 2. The Veto 2 is substantially identical with the provision of some alleged contract zoning issues as a result of the motion that was adopted by our city council at last meeting. And I am personally convinced, and I'm not as a lawyer, but as reading and understanding this, that the provisions that we made are reasonable, do not constitute contract zoning. And there is nothing within this provision that we don't ask every other property owner or developer to perform. There's nothing special here. Certain improvements in those things need to be worked at the platting level. And the way that I read the additional item, that the adequate provision be made within one year from the date of publication for the necessary infrastructure for all the needs that are necessary, including improvements of Yorktown and Commerce. Again, those are nothing new or different than what we have for every matter where we have zoning, which is subject to platting. So I think, in my opinion, you're on solid grounds here, and I just wanted to give you a couple of my comments at this point. Other comments?
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I may, make a couple very short comments regarding this. First of all, I hope everybody understands, especially the college, that every single development or building or anything that goes on, everybody's writing over there, by the way, it's kind of interesting, anyway, that goes on, that it's all, we all require, always require the same thing, that if there's additional... always require the same thing, that if there's additional infrastructure that needs to go in in order to be a part of whatever the, the new build is, then everybody's required to pay their part. And I would not personally be for asking anything more than what we would do for anybody else of the college when we ever get to that point, just to let you know. So a couple of things. One is my personal belief and the reason why the, the mayor had vetoed to begin with. I understand that at the very beginning, he had, many years ago, he had been against the community college going there. My thinking on that has to do with the fact that at the time it was industrial zoned and it would affect potentially our, our taxing ability in the city. I think I said all that in the last meeting. But I think more importantly than that is that there's very few opportunities for us to discuss the fact that in our state, the way that the community colleges are set up and the way the mill levees are set up, the, with the counties that those community colleges are in, we have a very few opportunities as a city to openly and publicly push that discussion. Certainly, I wouldn't say it's the community college's fault at all. It has to do with the way that things are set up in our state and we really don't have the opportunity to make that openly to our citizens, what the problems are that we see with that and how we think that affects our citizens in our county. Second piece would be my response to the response to the, to the veto from the community colleges. I see that as, of course, everybody being human and the way that you guys have to manage your business too. Part of it, I think, would be emotional response that I read throughout, meaning, and not that I wouldn't have said the same thing, but being upset with the fact that what you're trying to accomplish in our city, which by the way, you guys do a tremendous amount of amazing things for our students in our city and our kids in our city, the fact that five minutes down the road, any of our kids can go to college, not very many places have that opportunity. We know that the community college does great things for our students and a majority of the reason why people move to Andover, why I moved to Andover, is because of all the educational opportunities that we have in Andover. The school system's second to none and the community college being a part of that, I think is a part of that as well. So that's my beliefs of the benefits of why Butler, why I love Butler County Community College or Butler Community, I went to, I went to it while it was BCCC. Anyway, I love that it's here and we'll do, and I'll, and I'll help in this, in the ways that I can here to do my best to make sure that we're taking care of you the best we can. I don't like personal attacks and there weren't any, so that's great. But just to keep that in mind, we're all human too, just like you guys are too. So emotional responses might happen every once in a while. And as far as the infrastructure that we had pointed out, I mean, I already, I already mentioned that. We wouldn't ask anything more of you than we would of anybody that was building any building and, and taking up more use of the roads and, and other infrastructure that we have. So when I vote tonight, those are all, that's the way that I, I came up with the reason why I would vote and the way that I'm going to vote tonight is for those reasons. And I would assume from what I said that you could guess the way I'd vote for that.
Thank you, Troy. Anyone else?
I would just state that my major, one of my major concerns in this would be definitely that we don't want to have any kind of a delay in the high schools project. We would definitely want our students to get on, get, get in, get the build, one building cleared out for the next one to go in. So I would not want to do anything and that could delay that for them as well.
Very good.
There is a few of those comments I was going to say that Troy responded on, so good job.
Thank you.
I thought of those as well.
Yes. Group think, right here.
All right. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the motion to override the mayor's veto, say so by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to make a small statement that I hope that the college takes advantage of this process. And they still have an obligation to go through the platting process. They, they know as well as we do that it takes teamwork, which is the college and USD three eighty-five and the city of Andover. And I see the fair lady from the Chamber of Commerce who painstakingly sits here every meeting, I don't know how you do that. You're just trying to keep us honest, aren't you? But it takes all of us working together to get something accomplished. We have done our piece and the purpose of overriding this veto this evening is, number one, in my opinion, the, the mayor probably cannot veto what we've just done. We've overridden it on the exact terms. We'll let somebody else decide what the next step will be. But we have opened the door to the college to do what it needs to be done and we hope that progress occurs forthwith. All right. Item number eleven, temporary improvement notes in the amount of eight million seven hundred fifteen thousand dollars.
Mr. President, this is a resolution authorizing the city to sell eight million seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in temporary notes for the purpose of, one, financing the first phase of Yorktown Road between US fifty-four, four hundred and Douglas. We also have some financing for the Prairie Creek additions that we've gotten into, cornerstone and the Lafayette Herman Residential Project and also Prairie Point Cornerstone that Donna has to remind me at, about periodically. So we have several projects in there. I just want to say when we go to market with our financial advisor, Piper Jaffrey, we are marketing what are called S and P one notes, which is the top rating for short-term financing. We were also confirmed at a double A on our general obligation bond in our recent rating by S and P, so it's all been very good financial news. And I feel like we have an attractive sale here to conduct that will be done on November twenty-seventh and we will come to you with the results of that. And at that time, you will reward the temporary notes to the low bidder.
Any questions? If not, do we have a motion?
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution providing, four, and authorizing a sale of a Series A twenty eighteen temporary improvement notes in an amount not to exceed eight million seven hundred fifteen thousand.
Second.
We have a motion by Greg and a second by Mike to adopt the resolution authorizing the sale as presented. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. So far, we're on a roll there, ladies and gentlemen. Item twelve, Vornado Expansion.
Well, I'll take it, but I'm sure our bond counsel, city attorney can weigh in also. But essentially, our committee consisting of Ms. McCoslin, the Assistant City Administrator, Clark Nelson, our council president, and the mayor and myself, and JT was present to advise, met with representatives of Vornado and they're coming to the city with the request of a tax, an industrial revenue bond for five, over five million dollars, five point two million dollars is the amount in there, asking for a one hundred percent tax abatement. And as you know, the first step is us doing a resolution of intent to make that notice that we're going to go forward and consider the tax abatement of a hundred percent for ten years. I think Vornado's been a great member of our community. They sound like they're ready to add sixty jobs over the next ten years. And I think everybody on the committee agreed in their recommendation that the council should approve this resolution of intent, go forth with the cost benefit analysis and we can come back to you and discuss then the terms of the tax abatement. But this is the first step is giving, approving the resolution of intent and then we'll come back with the next steps after that.
I might state that during one of the meetings that we had with the Vornado folks and they demonstrated us the scope of the expansion that they're doing, it's going to be double. It's going to be first class. I am very excited to participate in it and they're very happy with Andover and what we're doing. And hopefully they'll be even greater citizens for Andover for, for doing the same. And I'm, I'm hoping that it's a big success. Any further questions?
I see, you know, you made a note that there were sixty jobs. How many of those would be immediate?
What, we can talk more of them, but I think it was a sixty job projection over the next ten years. I didn't, didn't hear that it was going to be sixty jobs tomorrow. I think they're just looking at their future business and their growth patterns and this is what they think is going to happen over, during the life of the tax abatement.
Just to be clear, you're not approving the tax abatement tonight? Tonight's just a resolution of intent of whether or not you would consider issuing the bonds. The intent will require the computation of a cost benefit analysis, which will include with some specificity, the answer to council members Warrington's question about jobs, when they are expected to occur, what they are expected to pay, what the averages are, how many of those are expected to be new jobs here versus people who come from outside the community. Although that information should be made available at that time. It's a very good question.
Thank you for your clarification. Hopefully that partially answers your question.
I was going to say, if there isn't any other comment, I would move that we approve the resolution of intent of the city of Andover, Kansas to issue certain taxable revenue, industrial revenue bonds on behalf of Vornado Air LLC in the amount not to exceed five million two hundred thousand for the purpose of purchasing, acquiring, constructing, furnishing and equipping and expansion to an existing warehouse located at four fifteen East Thirteenth Street.
Second.
We have a motion by Caroline and a second by Brian to approve the resolution of intent as presented. Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Caroline, you're still on a roll.
Okay, my thing just went blank, but I'll go back to it.
Okay, we'll wait, we'll wait for you. Item number thirteen, Main Traffic Way hyphen Yorktown, ordinance designating certain streets. I'm not sure if I understand what we're doing or why.
And I'll, I'll let bond counsel weigh in, but essentially, Mr. President, that we need to classify this road that we're going to put in in short time. Hopefully we'll have plans for you to look at at the next meeting and approve a main traffic way. And I just, I just want to make clear that's, this is mostly for issuing debt purposes. There's a, there's a few small designations in there, but while we're having this discussion, this isn't designating this as a highway or a collector or an arterial. This is simply saying it's a main traffic way under state statutes that we can go and issue general obligation debt on. And I'd let the city attorney expound upon that any, to make sure that I haven't said anything out of line. But we've gotten to a lot of conversations about what this roadway is and I want to make sure they know this is a vehicle financing mechanism tonight, not a engineering document.
Okay. I, I better understand you're saying this is a vehicle by which we can possibly introduce some tax benefits and collect potential tax for the improvement of traffic ways. Anything that you need to add there, JT? Okay, we're rolling. Any further comments?
No, but I'll make a motion if you want to.
We are waiting.
All right. I move to approve ordinance designating South Yorktown Parkway as a main traffic way within the city of Andover, Kansas.
All right. We got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion by Caroline and a second by Greg to adopt the ordinance designating certain streets on the terms as presented. Further discussion?
This is not approving any construction drawings or anything yet.
No, sir. This is all about potential financing.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, code of the city of Andover, traffic and vehicles. Are we going to do away with all traffic and vehicles?
Yes.
I would support that motion.
Mr. President and council members, I'll try and make this as brief as possible. As you are probably all aware of, all of our school, eight school zones that we have in the city of Andover are all clearly defined and specified in the ordinance. We had to make some changes to two of our school zones and therefore we need an ordinance to change the, those two school zones. In your packet, the, these two zones are specifically the one on North Andover Road in front of Cottonwood and then on Allison, just south of the stadium. The reason for these changes is they've had some construction where they now have new entrances and exits from Cottonwood and, and behind the stadium that need to be encompassed inside that school zone. The one on North Andover Road is being extended two hundred and twenty-five feet to the north from where it currently is. As you look on the chart diagram that I gave you, the yellow line indicates the current school zone on Andover Road and the blue to the north basically is the two hundred and twenty-five additional feet. Again, on Allison, the current school zone runs from Andover Road to Church Street and now it'll extend a hundred and eighty feet past Church Street. Be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Is this anywhere close to the school zone that's heading down Central?
This is still, neither one of these together are probably as long as the one on Central. No, it's not.
Thank goodness. I feel better now about that. So we're attempting to extend the school zone a certain amount of feet primarily because of construction?
Because of these new entrances that have been built, exits and entrances on, for Cottonwood and, and the stadium.
Very good. Any questions, comments with?
Well, just for clarification, this would be permanent then? This, this isn't a temporary thing? This will be permanent?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
The only other, I, I think this is fine. If you would take a look at maybe putting a, a time zone sign on Douglas as you approach Sunflower? There's not one there, it just, it there, it just, there's a flashing light that says school zone, but there's not a, a time zone on that one.
I believe that's Central Standard.
Yeah. Yeah, no. So, but when you go around the corner and you get on to Shea, is that right?
Yes.
Um, there's one there as you, when you approach the high school, but there's not one on Douglas. And they don't flash at the same time, probably, probably because of the elementary school checks in later. So I'm assuming that that's two different school zones. There's the elementary and then you approach the high school and that's a separate one.
Uh, the, the school zones are set based on the school and they're, they're, they all differ. I believe about a year ago, you passed an ordinance where the school zone times are now set by myself in cooperation with the school district. If they change their start times, we have to change it and, and we don't have to bring you an ordinance every time they change their school start and end times. And so I'll take a look at that. And as far as that sign goes, I'll talk to Bill Bryce of the Street Department and see if we need some additional signs down there for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Yes, if this isn't appropriate, we can wait and do it in member items, but I just thought it tied in really well and it might be a good time to talk a little bit about. I think that the, the school and the police department and the busing company have done a really good job of working together and trying to address some concerns about people who don't obey the stop school bus signs. And I just wonder if you, you might share a little bit about what's come because of that and I'm, do we have to vote to change this fine amount or can you, do you get to just do that automatically?
I can clarify that. We, the police department started our enforcement efforts on school bus stop violators earlier this year, even before the tragic incident that happened in Indiana. As of a week or so ago, we had issued about twenty-five citations for people running stop, uh, school bus stop signs. stop, uh, school bus stop signs. And a year ago this time, we had issued eight. So more than tripled our efforts so far this year. And then a, a week or two ago, we, a citizen in Andover, Ms. Carpenter, got on the news and, and wanted to start a campaign to, for awareness. And actually, the police department was already in the process of starting some of that also, but we joined with her in a partnership with her and the Durham School Services and the school district, Brett White and, and the administration. So far, we have put together a flyer. A, a lot of the committee agreed that some of this is awareness. And so we started our first effort towards getting information out. We put together a flyer. Those flyers went to all of our police chaplains to distribute among their prisoners. It went to, we sent it out to all our HOA contacts to distribute to their residents. We sent it to the Chamber of Commerce, who's going to send it to their businesses. We sent it to the school, who's distributing it to the parents of the school district through Peachjar. It will go out later this month to the Sewer Bills, and we're working on, probably have it up as early as tomorrow, where we'll have inform, same information, maybe a little different format on our Facebook page, and the city's Facebook, and also on Channel 7. So we really have done a big blast to get the information out. We're still, still doing enforcement efforts, and those enforcement efforts are going to continue even more so after we get the information out. And, and in this committee, this group meeting that we had last week, one of the recommendations was that our, our fine was extremely low compared to other places for this type of violation. And our city ordinance specifies that our municipal court judge sets the fine, and it's defined that fines will be no less than $5, but no more than $200, and it's set by the municipal court judge. So as of last week, or, we were able to, in a meeting with the judge, we bumped the fine from $150 to $200, which is the max he can do. Anything more than that, we'll take an ordinance change. And, and so now a fine for running a school bus sign is $200, our highest fine that we have, along with a $90 court cost. So it's going to cost $290. That's still on the low end of some of the state charges, but still a significant fine. I don't know if this committee is going to want to come to the council to address in the future to see if they can make it higher. I would be reluctant to push for anything higher, because of my concern is that we, if the fine goes too high, we might hurt ourselves in, in the enforcement part. Officers in their discretion might be reluctant to give someone a $500 fine, and I wouldn't want to see that. Our mission right now is to get people to stop for these stops.
Point very well taken. Any other comments?
Thank you.
If not, we're back on the school zone ordinance, and I would certainly entertain a motion of some fashion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 18, Article 3, Section 18-301 of the Andover City Code, modifying the distances of two school zones.
You have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion by Greg and a second by Caroline to adopt an ordinance amending the distances of two school zones as presented. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
I would like to add one comment. I, it was brought up about the school zone on Central, the longest one in probably the state of Kansas. We have had some suggestions from the public, and we are looking at maybe making a modification to that school zone. My intent-
Making it longer?
Shorter.
Oh.
Uh, ma- making, uh, the recommendation is to make it, to move it a little bit to the west, so it doesn't start right at Shea, and maybe shrink it down a little bit on the east side, so ultimately it would be shorter. But in the interest of doing things the right way, I think we're gonna, I've been working with Les, and we're going to try and maybe have a study done before we bring that back to you. But we are concerned, or looking at that school zone.
I appreciate you doing that. Item number 15, code of the city of Andover slash fire protection.
Good evening, Mr. President and council and staff. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this evening on a matter of public safety. Mike Roosevelt, you're a fire marshal. And the, you have before you the, an ordinance to amend Chapter 7 of the Code of the City of Andover, adopting an updated fire code with our local amendments. This ordinance will adopt the 2012 edition of the International Fire Code, prepared and published by the International Code Council with amendments that are pertinent to our city. This code is the partner code to the 2012 International Building Code and the other construction trade codes that you have recently adopted. This code has been locally vetted through the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County in that they have had the 2012 version in place for the past several years. It generally will apply to commercial occupancies and those occupancies with primarily public spaces. It generally does not apply to single-family or multifamily occupancies with four or fewer dwelling units. An apartment complex with many, many unit, units would have some impact through the fire code in this version or previous versions as well. The current code is based in the 2003 International Code Council document that was amended back in 2000 and adopted by this council back in 2007. So our current code is fairly old in the realm of code issues. Excuse me. We currently have about 20 administrative and technical amendments that deal with Andover specific issues, such as our local control burning ordinances, temporary membrane structures, and some other local processes similar to amendments that were made in the 2012 International Building Code. And these are generally in line with the adopted codes in the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County. The ordinance as presented will repeal and replace ordinance number 1390, and has been reviewed by the city attorney as to form. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at present.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. Just as I listened to you talk, it seems like we're four to six years behind these dates. I mean, is there something now, the International Fire Code, that's 2016 or 2017, or is 2012 the most current?
There is a 2018 edition that has recently been published. Our neighbors to the west and other areas are considering the 2018 version. It has not been vetted very well in our region. Like I mentioned, this is the partner code to the 2012 Building Code, and it would be inappropriate to have the 18 version of the fire code, which enforces the management of the buildings after they've been built under the 2012 code.
Okay, I understand that. But, but it was like when you were talking, we were talking 2003, and I'm sitting here going, okay, this is 2018, so we're just now getting up to 2012 levels, but okay, so this is a process that needs vetting in a little bit of time, so it would be normal. We're not in a rear, or behind other cities or anything? This is pretty typical, what we're doing?
The timing is fairly typical. We're a slight bit behind, because when we originally adopted the code set in 2007, the fire code went with the 03 code, and for reasons that I cannot explain, the building code went to the 06 code at that point in time.
Okay.
So we kind of created a little issue there, and we are now fixing that issue by making them match up with the same current edition year.
You would be happy with what you have presented here for us to approve?
Yes, ma'am.
Caroline, you're kind of on her roll.
All right. Okay, I move to approve the ordinance adopting the 2012 International Fire Code and authorize the mayor to sign the ordinance, or would that be the president tonight? It'd be the mayor still. Okay.
Oh, it needs to be changed. Just, I need to sign something.
There's a couple resolutions.
Oh, okay.
Second.
We have a motion by Caroline. Is there a second?
Second.
We got a second by Mike to adopt the resolution as presented. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Nobody had any questions for you, Mikey?
That's not true, sir. The one did have one.
I did have a question.
No, I'm in after, after that good clarification. Item 16, code of the city of Andover Municipal Court. Is that in the fire, the police arena, or?
Not anymore.
Having to change the court location.
Our original code lists the location of municipal court still at the old location. This updates it to now court being here.
Is it too late to move it back?
Probably.
Probably so. All right.
I think they've been settled in for over a month.
I think so. We have a motion for said ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion by Troy and a second by Caroline to approve the court location ordinance as presented. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 17, a discussion regarding workers' compensation insurance.
Council president and council, um, tonight I just wanted to put in front of you the proposal we received back from Travelers. You may recall last year, we had Dusty, our property and liability broker, also bid our work comp. We've been a longtime member of K-Met. We, I wouldn't say we have any dissatisfaction with the agreement, but we are aware, and we're aware last year as well, that when you're in a pool, which is what that is, a pool of cities putting all of their money together to cover work comp expenses, the larger you become, the, the bigger dog you are, if you will, in that pool, the more you are likely helping share the burden of some of the smaller members of the pool. And so at some point, you probably should do some due diligence and determine if this is still your best fit. So, um, last year Dusty took it out to bid. It came in about $10,000 less to change, but they true up your premiums on work comp later, about a year later, after they can look at what your payroll really was, because of course, some of your employees will quit through the year and things like that, and your payroll was an estimate on the front end. When we considered the trueing up process, we just felt like the savings were going to be minimal, if any. And so instead of disrupting the service, we would continue. This year, we've asked that again, and as you may recall, instead of being with EMC on property and liability, we've switched in April to Travelers. They have provided the proposal in your packet tonight. It already shows an 11% decrease in our current premium, but the new caveat to add there is that in September, our representative with K-Met met with me and shared, due to not our bet, due to our worst year maybe ever, definitely recently in 2017, our premium will go up with K-Met, and our experience mod, which is what they use to quote your work comp insurance in this case, would be going above 1.0 for 2019. They estimated a minimum of a 10% or a double-digit rate increase, which is why they came out to meet with us and talk to us about it. So what you see tonight, where I'm saying that that's going to be an 11% decrease, I do want to stress again, of our 28 premium, we expect, we've been told by K-Met to expect the 2019 premium to be even higher. And Dusty's best estimate, because he is familiar with K-Met's rates, is that it may well be around a $30,000 difference between the two. I didn't want to dump this on you for the first time, when we need to renew our work comp insurance, because we do need to do this before the beginning of the year. So if there's need to have K-Met come out, discuss what they offer, discuss why it's going up so much. I, I feel like last year's experience is by and large what the situation is. Your safety committee continues to meet. What I would personally say about what happened in 2017 is a lot of bad luck, and even the K-Met representative, and I'm sure he would come and say this to you, but if you'd like to hear it from him, I can bring him. Stuff happens, and the things that happened in 2017 were expensive injuries. So it wasn't an extra amount of negligence. It wasn't a lot of carelessness. It was just the things that happened were things that required shoulder surgery, and that cost a lot of money. I believe there was also maybe, maybe a knee, there, there were two surgeries, and that was really enough. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but just kind of wanted some direction. I guess we've been with K-Met for so long. If there's questions about the service we're getting, if there's a strong loyalty that we want to stick with K-Met, because we've done it for a really long time, and we want to be that partner for all those other municipalities, there's 160 involved in the pool. If there's more information you feel like you want me to bring you before you make a decision.
Tell me again, is this a decision of Travelers versus K-Met?
That's what I would propose, because I don't believe we have a lot of time to go explore whole other opportunities. Travelers does offer us very likely the best alternate, because they do provide-
Who's on, who's on your committee that made that recommendation?
This is working with Dusty Davis, our representative for our property and our liability. Mark and I have talked about this, and we did fill the mayor in, because he wouldn't be here tonight.
Okay. And you all concur that moving to Travelers is a better decision for the city?
No.
No, well, what I would say is that K-Met, so K-Met's bylaws state that you have to tell them in far enough advance that you couldn't possibly get their renewal rate. The renewal rate comes out December 1st, 30 days in advance. Their bylaws say you have to cancel 60 days in advance, which was actually two weeks ago. I do have in writing from K-Met, they will honor us pulling out of K-Met if we will wait to see this renewal on December 1st. So I would probably recommend you get the renewal from K-Met. You actually do compare what the two rates come back. But I would say, given that, I wouldn't then have a strong allegiance to not go with your better financial decision.
Sounds like a very good business judgment decision to me.
So we're not making that decision tonight, right?
No. Just wanted to know if there's something else you need me to bring you when I am asking you to make a decision, which will likely be at the December meeting.
I think this is a good decision. You're always looking for opportunities to do things cheaper and, and better. One question I do have is, once we get out of, out of the pool as the largest member, how does that affect the, the other members?
Probably a question I would have to ask K-Met. I mean, I, I would assume it will-
Does that make their premiums go up?
There's over 100, there's over 100 members.
Does that make their premiums go up higher too?
Well, of course, they want to have larger cities in their pool to spread their risk across, because they're the insurer for several cities with less than 20 employees. And, you know, what I would say is, we're balancing our needs versus having to stay in now and, you know, maybe benefit the, the smaller communities. And I believe in that to an extent, but there is a price range that those ideas just, just don't continue to carry, in my opinion.
Wouldn't we be going, I'm sorry, are you, I'm sorry. Wouldn't we be going into some other kind of a pool or not? We would just be straight with Travelers, is that correct?
Travelers is a carrier, so much like you can do, you can join a pool for your health insurance, or you can be self-insured. But we are currently with a carrier for our health insurance, which is Blue Cross Blue Shield, Blue Cross Blue Shield, my goodness. This would be a similar analogy to-
Okay.
Travelers is the Blue Cross Blue Shield. K-Met is the pooling option.
All right. Something else, you've talked about, the injuries that happened were in 2017, so obviously this is 2018. So really what is happening is that your insurance claims, it's, it's like, it skips, it's, it's a year ahead of-
It's a little worse than that. So they impact you one year later, but they stay with you three years. So the way that they create your experience mod is going to be for 2019, it will be 2017, 2016, 2015. For 2020, it's going to be 2016, 2017, 2018. So that 17's still in there. So next year will be the first of the three years to include that large claim year.
Okay, so that was going to be my next question. You said it could later than if nothing else happens, your premiums could go down if there had been no other claims. In other words, this increase could-
In three, after three renewals, it will drop off.
Right.
But it will be with us for the next-
Right, okay. All right, I was just clarifying that. Thank you.
Yeah.
I just had one question. You said that Travelers, the only reason why they're our only option is due to timing. We don't have enough time to get multiple different bids.
They're, they're probably the only ones that are going to be competitive, in Dusty's opinion, because they already have all of your property and reliability business.
And we can confirm, there's not a lot of private companies in the municipal work comp industry. EMC is the other one, and like Jenny pointed out, we left them on property and casualty, and now we're with Travelers, so that's why they're probably going to give you the best rate, because they have both our property and casualty and potentially our, our workers' comp. So- So, I would be glad to ask Dusty to ask EMC if they're willing to quote it, but it's just-
Well, if he's, I mean, I wouldn't mind asking either. I mean, are we not required to try to get three bids for stuff? Or is that only for construction or other things?
Not per se, but that's commonly our best practice on stuff. It's just that this is a little bit more of a limited market. So, what we could certainly look at.
I wouldn't mind asking. I mean, all I can do is say, you know, it'd be more expensive, right? Or it could be less.
No, I agree with you about that, but also, I also realize that with your insurance companies, the more plans you have with one, the better rates you get, too, so.
Yeah, totally.
When I was at the county, we bid the county work comp pool and property casualty pool. They actually, they actually had both. And what EMC, you know, through ICI, when we were working with them, said is, our quote is on both. So, you know, once you get into that with them, is they're always very competitive, but they're not willing to segregate them out in many cases. In this case, we are right now, so that's, but I could see in the future, they would continue to say one is contingent on the other. We don't know that for sure, but that's what they did to us when we were at Butler County, when I was at Butler County.
Very good.
I got a question. I think Caroline covered what I was going to ask, but it does go down after three years if you don't have any claims. It's not like homeowners insurance, it never goes down.
Right. No, it will be based on our experience for the three prior years. And I do, I do want to clarify, it will be a miracle if we ever had no claims. We generally, this, it's my eighth year working with the work comp insurance here at City of Andover. We've had 10 to 14 every year, ranging from a bee sting, I mean, so some really minimal, gotta go get a steroid shot, because somebody had a reaction, poison ivy, or in a park that was at one point in time, but thank you to a great public work staff. It was once overrun with poison ivy, they've eradicated a whole lot of that, but, so we get things like that. So, we'll probably never have a no claims. Our hope is to continue to not have the big claims, the ones that cause people to be off work, because then you're not only paying for the surgery, the medical expenses, you're paying them also for their time off of work. So, that's when it really starts to double up.
Very good. I will now turn to member items. And as usual, we'll begin with a man, Mr. Bryan.
I'm good tonight, thank you.
Yep.
Caroline?
And I already had mine brought in that I wanted to talk about, so we're good there.
Are you all right? I'm good. Gee, Greg?
Mr. President, I don't have anything.
Yeah, Mike?
None tonight.
I've got a whole list of things. Well, but I tell you, I'm going to pass, I want to thank everybody for being cooperative this evening. Things went reasonably well, and I hope that Butler College does the right thing. From that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. President-
A little quick, the chief has something.
You forgot about me.
Oh, no.
First of all, Mr. President-
I assure you, we did not forget about you.
Counsel, I want to apologize. I know I don't, you don't like having things thrown on your agenda at the last minute. This is the first time in 12 years I've ever had to do this.
I think we need to have a motion here, as to whether we accept your apology. Seeing none.
But, I have presented to you prior to the meeting, a packet of information, and we have, we, we've, back in October, we had four of our air conditioning, heating, exchange units up on the roof. I believe there's like six of them on there. Four of them, the heat exchangers went out on them. We got quotes to replace the heat exchange, and it was like $8,000. That was $8,000 to repair units that are near the end of life. They came with the building, they're at least 13 years old. So, we went out, we didn't think that was a good idea to put that money into it. We went out and got bids, three bids from different vendors, to replace those four units with new units. The bids came in, and our low bid was from Central Mechanical Wichita, which is the company that has our maintenance agreement, and is most familiar with our systems that we have. And so, this emergency request, because we're a little low on heat in our building, and is to expend $22,300 in the replacement of four rooftop air conditioning, heating units. This was obviously not budgeted this year, wasn't anticipated, but I do have the funds. Donna has assured me. I have the funds in my budget, probably just from unused salaries, because we've been short-staffed all year, that more than offset the cost of this, and not go over my operational budget for this year. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that Daniel, our Parks Department Supervisor, is here. If you have any technical questions, he's helped us through this whole process.
Well, his credibility will be substantially greater than the speakers, but do you have any, anything to add? If so, come on up to the podium.
Sorry, I forgot. Daniel Shapaw, 711 East Cloud, and Parks Supervisor with the city. There are 13 rooftop units, so the four out of six is pretty, you would probably not be working in there right now, it would be too cold. But there is a substantial percentage of your, of your capability. We've, I think we've done three other units in the last two years. I don't, not 100% sure about that, but several. So, probably half of that, those units would have, will have been changed after this. But Chief's right, it's kind of that tough spot to justify putting the amount of money in the actual repair. We've been advised that 15 years is, is, is good for those package rooftop styles that we, that he has there. So, we're kind of feeling like the complete replacement is best at this point.
Well, I feel a lot more comfortable now. So, if I understand it, then you're looking for approval this evening for the emergency funds for Central Mechanical Wichita in the amount of $22,303. Okay?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I would take back my motion to adjourn from earlier, and then make a motion on the recommendation that we approve the repair, or the replacement of the four rooftop air handling, handling units from Mechanical, or from Central Mechanical Wichita, I'll see at a cost of $22,303.
It's 300 even. There's a typo there.
300. Although not budgeted, the funds will be paid for by unexpected monies within the police department's 2018 operating budget.
All right. So, we have a motion by Troy and a second by Caroline to replace four rooftop air handling units from Central Mechanical Wichita in the amount of $22,300. Further discussion.
How long will it take them to replace them?
We hope that that would be done next week, but with Thanksgiving, I'm not, I can't guarantee that. We do have to rent a crane, and it's a little more involved than just, you know, around behind the building. But we've done it before, it usually takes a full day, but these units still have to come in, and we have the holiday week.
Further discussion. Seeing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We got some new air handling units. Did any of those go into your home at all?
Yeah. Thank you.
Operates his office.
Very good.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry. At the next meeting, I'm going to ask the mayor to appoint the Salary Review Committee, and I just wanted to put that on all of your radar. I'm hoping that committee could meet on December 7th. Doesn't have to be the 7th, so we can, we can flex a day or two if you wanted to do it, and that's a bad day for you. But that's an annual appointment coming up this year, just like last year. We'll only review the 15 or so exempt employees, not all 90, so hopefully, that's a plus, because I'm going to actually ask you to do double duty, and also review health insurance bids, which we are currently taking, they're at market right now. And so, there'll be a follow-up meeting that I would like you to serve double duty on later in the month. Please and thank you.
Yeah, we have not heard from the fire chief at all tonight. What, are we sick? What's the problem?
Y'all are doing a very fine job. Thank you for your service.
That's what I was waiting to hear.
Thanks.
Okay, Troy, do you have a motion?
Sure, I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
We got a motion to adjourn by Troy and seconded by Mike. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.